Okay, let's come to order. Any questions on the agenda?
Mr. Gill.
Sir.
On the Thurman Francis DC trip, is that, I don't know that I saw the dates, are they going on a weekend?
I think it's spring break ended, Jeff.
I can confirm that for a moment.
I figured it probably would be, but I just wondered.
Yeah, let us confirm it, but I believe it is.
I assume those sort of field trips are almost all on spring break now with the new interpretation of the...
Yeah, that's really, I'm pretty sure it is.
Other questions on the agenda? Okay, consent agenda?
No, I do want Don, Mr. Odom, I'm talking about, you see where Blackman High School and Eagleville High School has a contract with Dr. Jason Neve. Talk about, Mr. Odom, real quick, what he's an advocate for and of.
It's called the Power of ICU, and Blackman and Eagle were interested in it. They made a presentation at the state lead conference. The state brought them in. And it's an interesting program, the writers of the program, one of the fellows from Wilson County and the other from Severville. This Dr. Neve is from Severville and actually is at Severville Middle School. But this thing is going on across the country. They're moving across with schools that are doing this. You can actually Google them, look at their website, look at the states where they're either already doing it or the other. And what it really deals with is that to try to keep students from getting zeros or not turning in work. It's a culture development to not accept that, to get students to change in other ways. So, the whole design of this thing is to really change the culture of the schools, get the buy-in from the teachers and the parents and all. Because teenagers sometimes will just say, you know, "Give me my zero." You know, "I really don't want to do that." So, what you're dealing with, with this particular program, the design of this, is setting up the culture to where you basically say to them that we're not going to accept this, you can do better work. And it uses other techniques and all to try to overcome that. So, that's what this is. But if you want to see more about it, just Google it and all. But it's a book that's really going all across the country. And the state did show it at their lead conference this year. Interesting.
You know, one of the things also we've done at middle schools across the county for a long time, kind of initiated by the middle school principals group with ZAP, Zero and Upper Minimum. You know, whether we agree with it or not, I mean, we are about mastering about kids learning skills. So, when they don't turn it in, they say, "No, we're not taking a zero. You stay at our school, you're going to do it. We're going to give you partial credit for what you do." And ultimately, they're the benefactor of having done the work. So, you know, I know we're here at Laverne High School, you know, that they're implementing that, there's been some criticism forward. But, you know, we're all about trying to teach kids to learn and help kids succeed.
You know, on that Laverne, now that we're talking about this topic, it seems to me there might be a little bit of misunderstanding. I mean, the ones who get a 50 minimum, they still have to do some work to get the 50.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's not like they do nothing and they still get a 50, right?
Well, I mean, they've got to do work.
And even where they repeat work, where we do our concept recovery, you know, we prefer concept recovery before you get to grade recovery. Because if a student doesn't understand a particular skill or concept to move on, sometimes it's detrimental to them. They just, they got gaps. You know what I'm talking about? So, you try to do it with concept. We actually start the training within the next few days on some of the compass learning that you purchase, you know, with some of the Race to the Top funds. And that's, students look at this, there's teachers that teach it. It is an interactive program where A+ was not nearly as interactive as this particular program. And they still have to pass their test and cover the material. The bottom line is, you want them to learn the material. You want them to develop that concept. And one of the fallacies, one of the most difficult things in grading, I guess, is because you very often do an averaging of grades. And we've brought people in to come and talk with our staff and teachers about this. You really need to grade the students on their performance at the end of the grading period. Because any of us could start out on a concept at the start of a grading period and really do miserably in that skill or concept. But once we catch on to it, maybe we've caught on to it. So, if you've mastered it at the end of the quarter or the six weeks or something, it would sure be nice if we could get the thought process that you're graded at your end of your training. You know, so it's something we strive for all the time. But lots of software, lots of things are set up just to do the average. So, if you start out low, sometimes you mathematically cannot recover.
Concept or grade recovery aspect, when does that training take place? Is it outside of this normal classroom?
It's both. You know, we have a computer for every five students in a classroom, so a teacher could do very often the concept recovery. If we're going into a grade recovery mode, then they typically have to do that at some scheduled time. It could be an extended contract after school, which we give contracts for that. Or it could be, some do it in the morning or some do it when they have the periods during the day, like the dog time at Smyrna High School and the Blackman High. All of them have these times that they bring students in. But, you know, even when they do that, it's not just a matter of putting in so many hours before you do it. And we require at least 12 additional hours. Well, the student's already spent their full time in the course, but, you know, they haven't passed it. But they still have to pass the test, you know, and basically when we do that, we give them a 70.
What is the test that they have to pass? Is this the software?
It is. It's basically this, and the software is aligned to the state's skills and standards. So, they have to pass the test on that software. I mean, it gives them a test. You see, one of the things, the nice thing that it can do, the teacher does have the power to go in and set what skills it wants taught based upon the student's deficits, you know, and the concepts. The other option is that you can let it test the student and then plan a program for that student based upon the skills or concepts that's not already been met. And so, it depends on how deficit we might be looking at it in skills, whether, what's best, you know? If it's just one or two concepts or something like that, the teacher may just specify that one. And that's not as much a timeframe as when the student masters that concept. You know, if you were having trouble with signed numbers in algebra and you could sit down and go through some exercises and go through some instruction dealing with, dealing with signed numbers, and you had mastered signed numbers, then you've mastered that concept.
But that instruction is all between a computer screen and the student, right?
Totally, because we have facilitators to do that. You have somebody with them. For instance, in the ones that we do extended contract after school, we'll have a teacher, a teacher is there with them. So, there's usually some of both. The facilitator that may be running it after school, we have other paperwork where the teacher that has the student during the day can mark what skills, can make recommendations to that facilitator and all to do with. We also plan to use it in some of the time for the in-school suspension time for students. It's very often, there's a connection with students here that are having difficulty in school behavior-wise. Sometimes behavior is caused because they're having difficulty academically, and it spurs that. So, the nice thing about sometimes software, you get also not only immediate correction, but you also get immediate praise. You get feedback when you've gotten it correctly. And then the program has the ability to start you at this level and make it just a little bit more difficult to move you up as you are successful in going up. So, you know, the instruction in the future and a lot of the online instruction, there's not any question in my mind that you're going to see increasingly individualized instruction for students. That the wave of the future in education will not be near as much a teacher in front of a classroom, but it's going to be more individual instruction based upon what the students need and what they need for growth and dealing with that. And I, Mr. Tackett teaches at MTSU too with some, so, I mean, that's what I'm reading and seeing now.
Well, thinking back to my days when we discussed at Oakland that policy, never implemented the 50 minimum policy, but we discussed it. And, you know, I think that, you know, the issue that I see from it right now is teacher buy-in to that, you know? And if you don't have complete teacher buy-in, it becomes a very difficult process. I think there are teachers that believe, I don't think I'd believe this, but I think there are teachers believe that a kid will sit there, do nothing, do nothing, do nothing, so he can go after school and make it up and get it done that way. My experience is the kid who does nothing, does nothing, is not doing it, so he can go after school and do it the easy way. And I think teachers resist it to some degree because they feel like the kids give them a second, a third, and a fourth chance. And they have presented the material appropriately the first time through, why don't they get it that time through? So, I think it's about teacher buy-in as much as anything else.
That's what this Power of ICU, that's one reason you do it collectively and with your group of teachers. And you start creating that culture within your whole building so everybody gets that same idea. You know, most teenagers need a second chance, right? Think about your own time or somebody else's.
It's difficult for a teacher that's had that other culture for 25 years to suddenly come back and change. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that I recognize why the difficulty comes. Because it's a, we're talking about a whole different set of circumstances. And it's extremely difficult for some teachers to accept it. They're not going to accept it frankly, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Tackett said. We're still saddled with the same federal restrictions that we've always been. We've got to find a way to make sure by 2014, what, 90%?
100%.
100%.
But 90% graduates.
Yeah, 90% graduate. And here we are, if you've got 20 or 25% of them, they're just going to fight you to the end, say, "I'm not going to do anything. I'm not going to do this. I'm not going to do that. And here's my, you know, I'm going to drop out." There's consequence for us for having that kind of kid and having a parent that won't push him. So, we've done some things that, you know, I've been at it a long time too, and it, you know. But I also saw high school principals that said, that didn't really in the beginning want to give kids that were suspended partial credit when they came back if they did their work. Because, you know, Mr. Raich, who's been here a while, I've been here a while, the Knowlans have been here a while, you know, they don't, they didn't necessarily like that. But when we finally went to that and credit and grade recovery and the 50%, I mean, they were, they came along understanding that if we don't do something like this, we don't have a chance to make graduation rate. We're going to be a failing school. And whether we like it or not, I mean, we've got, we're going to ultimately have to do those things or we're doing them now.
You know, there's a mindset, I guess, among us adults and all, that consequences will solve your problem every time. I mean, we think the whole penal system, that's proved that doesn't necessarily work, you know, cynicism there. But Tennessee has an extremely tough law dealing with driver's license. Student doesn't pass three of the courses for a given semester, they lose their driver's license. And you can get it back once before you're 18, and if you lose it again, you can't get it back until you're 18 years old. That hasn't turned some people around even that. So, I mean, the consequences are there that were even above us by the legislature.
I think the part of this, though, in the public's, they don't, some of them anyway, seem to be under the impression that this minimum 50 means they do nothing and they get a 50. And that does not seem to be what you're saying now, that they still are doing at least some sort of computer work or something in order to justify that 50.
There has, there has to be, there has to be work completed. We, you know, it doesn't do us a lot of good to give them a grade if they get to the end of course exam and then cannot pass that exam. The other side of the coin, it takes effect next year with all these end-of-course assessments and all, and the numbers have been developed. That's 35% of a teacher's evaluation, student performance 50% of a teacher's evaluation, same for principals and assistant principals. The state board will develop those guidelines this month. It'll go to them how it's done. So, I mean, there are consequences for everybody involved in this, but the biggest loss is when a student just doesn't learn the work. We're in a world competitive nature in the United States, and we absolutely have got to try to ensure that students are competitive and have that ability. And some are much easier than others.
Wayne.
Did you say who would be receiving this? All faculty or just...
They do train the faculty. Yes, they do.
The entire faculty?
The November the 2nd, the one that these two schools are doing, is the day that we had to change because of Election Day. We got out, and the teachers, it's still an in-service day for teachers, so all of their faculties are there. So, they're joining together to train their faculty along with this. There's a book that's entitled this too, the same thing, The Power of ICU. ICU stands for intensive care unit. By the way, it's not anything magic about this, but it's just acknowledging the fact that some students need lots of time and support.
You know, Mr. Odom, back when I coached at Smyrna High School, which golly, it's hard to believe it's been 20, 23 years ago, we had a fundraiser. You remember those days they had a donkey basketball game?
Yes, sir.
Well, they put, my donkey was called Intensive Care. They intentionally put me on that donkey, and he was the wildest and the roughest donkey of the bunch. And within seconds, I was flat on the floor on my back. So, when you mention intensive care, that brings back that memory.
If this is highly effective, is there some way to permeate it through our system?
We're pretty much doing it everywhere. I mean, they're doing, they're doing the grade recovery, credit recovery, most, you know, suspensions, most of them are offering credit for kids when they return. Also, everybody now is doing interventions, remediations for what's Bulldog Time or...
The PLC thing, the whole big component of that.
It's going, it's happening in school.
I meant the ICU, I mean...
Oh, the ICU. Well, we give each school, they get professional development, and they have, they try to assess their particular needs, what they feel best. And they kind of make up their own agenda and prepare this for these two schools.
I can assure you, if it works well at one place or the other, that our administrators are astute enough to want to borrow something that somebody else has working. So, if this turns out very well for these, see, because we collaborate, Mr. Gill requires the principals have their own collaborative PLCs and working together. So, and if it works out well, you won't have to...
Eric. Mark, let me clarify one more time, because what you're saying is still, I'm still wrapping my head around it. If they do nothing or they've got to do something, because I've heard that criticism as well. If they do this computer time, if they do this credit recovery and such, it's actually not a 50 they get, though. It's a 70, right?
If they pass, if they're able to pass the exam at the end of that recovery period.
Okay.
But now, what you're speaking of is a credit recovery.
Oh.
That's not necessarily a grade recovery. Now, grade recovery could occur in six weeks. A concept recovery could be a day, you know, today's lesson. So, you know, the ideal again is not to wait till they've not failed a semester or something like that. And because we get half a credit per semester. So, ideally, you don't want to wait that long. So, the idea is why we have the software and try to do the interventions all along is to recover. Another thing about teenagers, you know, when you deal with them, especially freshmen, if they do not pass about three courses or so, if you're not very careful, they start shutting down on you. I mean, and some of you that, the principals know exactly what I'm talking about. They give up quickly sometimes. So, you've got to give them opportunities for success.
So, it is possible for them to get a score between 50 and 70 because they could, they could meet the threshold of 50.
They would get a credit if they did.
I understand, but that is...
You could, you could get a score somewhere in between, but you wouldn't get a credit. And ultimately, you want to get the credit so you can graduate.
Right.
When we originally did that, the principals, remember, we spent four or five years, we brought all the principals up, and we came up with a plan that was agreeable by all. Where if you had like, if you needed to raise your grade 20 points, you'd have to serve more time, right? Put in more time, have to do more work. But in the highest grade you could earn was something, I can't remember the formula that we used. But at any rate, I think all of us felt like it was, you know, they'd earned their grade because of the time given. Don't you agree?
I agree. And students stay a step ahead of us very often. It takes us a while sometime to do it. Because Mr. Tackett said, when we first started the credit and grade recovery, you know, what we learned very quickly is there were some students who maybe made a D, said, "I want to C." And basically, what we found out, then they would shut down and not do work in the classroom to do exactly what you were talking about, "I'll just wait and try to do it at recovery." So, we basically cut that out. So, we said, "If you're going into a credit recovery situation, it's because you didn't earn a credit. You have scored below the 70 to do it. And we'll give you a 70 if you go to the credit recovery and pass the test that's associated with that." Because in their mind thinking, they thought going and doing 12 more hours on the computer would make it easier. So, we had to change. We honestly did because of the mindset of the student.
Yeah, I appreciate this discussion. It went beyond just this item, but it's certainly something that I've heard about several times over the last week or two out in the...
Might be a decent spotlight sometime.
You know, it might be, just clear up some of these issues. Anything else on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could we have a little discussion on this land for sale in Smyrna? A little unusual that we only had one response out of 25 vendors.
Five C.
As industrial Boulevard area. I just wonder how...
And that's adjacent to the company that wants it, isn't it?
Well, I understand that. But it's unusual that no one even responded. How do we...
Well, is that the land behind Cedar Grove, which is what Mr. Clardy anticipated? If you recall, like Mr. Blair says, adjacent to that trucking firm. And they made us an offer pursuant to legal requirements. We put it out there in RFP, and they're the only ones that are interested in it. And it would probably not benefit anyone else.
They would have to have an easement through the other person's property to even get to it.
One of the things we talked about that was we'd get an appraisal somewhere along the way?
We had an appraisal come back at around $70,000, so they're right on it.
Well, I didn't, I wouldn't worry about that appraisal. Okay. All right.
Other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, let's see. Number nine, you want to do on Thursday, Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir.
Number 10.
School approval compliance report. State Department of Education requires school systems submit an annual school approval report indicating compliance with state rules and regs and the detailed plans to rectify any deficiencies. Assistant superintendent and principal review the requirement and determine the rough counties in full compliance. And we recommend that you approve the Rough County 2010-2011 school approval compliance report.
Okay, questions on that? Is that one we do every year? I don't remember that one. Do it every year. Okay. 11.
Certification of compliance with Tennessee Code annotated section 49-3-310A. For textbook, Rough County schools must submit an annual report stating that the superintendent and the chairman of the board of the LEA certify that the educational all children enrolled in this LEA have been furnished all required textbooks. It's determined by the commissioner, the Rough County School Material Center Supervisor states all required requested textbooks have been provided to schools. And recommend that you approve the 2010-2011 certification compliance ED 2152 report.
So moved.
Sorry.
We're still coming back Thursday.
Did we have any back, any major backorder shortage?
Well, I think we were short, and as a matter of fact, we were talking about that today and ordered a lot of used textbooks. By purchasing used textbooks, I think we saved, what, $140,000 or $150,000, wasn't it?
140,000 was a, we got $114,000.
$114,000, yeah.
It's getting close to the adoption time we purchased used.
Yeah, so just purchase used ones, so...
Wow.
You mean, used ones to add to the ones we already had?
Yeah, because they expire within a year or two anyway. You've got to have your book.
Yeah.
I'm curious if there's been any preliminary thought about at what point in time will systems begin to go away from paper textbooks and get into electronic media for that, which means you buy software to update as opposed to buy the books?
We've, you know, what we discussed that, I think we did a study two or three or four years ago. The expense obviously was a deterrent there. But on every school's website, there are online textbooks that they can access. Probably if we had a computer and tried to download that on there, it would be enormous. You want to speak to that, Ms. Amy?
We do, basically, it's the publishers and the textbook printing people that are trying to drag their heels on that because somebody's going to lose some money in the printing industry when that happens. Currently, when we purchase our paper textbooks, we for free get the digital content. So, the digital content is loaded, is available on the network, and the students are given the passwords to get into those. They are right protected. So, someone from another county couldn't go in and look at those textbooks because we have that, because we purchased the textbooks. But we do have online versions available for them. It was interesting, at Lead, I was able to speak with McGraw-Hill, who has a contract with Apple. And I believe they're working in California now to get their textbooks onto the iPad. So, if that becomes more prevalent, I think you'll see a big change come about in textbook publishers and how they're going to deliver that content.
What kind of costs is out there right now for a textbook versus what the online version of that might be? Do you have any numbers to that?
They really don't want to price it to us that way. I've never seen a price to be negotiated that way because they're not quite there yet. I mean, they're, from a technical standpoint, they could do that, but I don't think they can get the publishing company...
It's a good business opportunity for some book company to come out and go that direction. Everybody didn't have to do it. As soon as one company, it seems to me like, decides to go that way, it will open the floodgates up. Some average companies are going to do that.
Yes, and I don't think it's going to be that much longer before we see that being an option.
Would it be possible, this would be some busy work for somebody like Jeff maybe, but is there some way to figure out with all the textbooks that a middle school student has or all the textbooks that a high school student, what those, what the cost of all those textbooks that they used in that year? You know, what is that cost?
Versus whatever it costs to go the other way?
Yes, sir.
What, okay.
Because you still have to buy the digital content, and then you'll have to purchase a device to load that digital content onto. Because you'd have to provide every student with an iPad, a laptop, some sort of handheld device that's going to be large enough for them to see the screen. At this point, we can do, and those smartphones are becoming a big push in schools to use those. But the screens are still sort of small to do textbook reading with those type of devices.
And you know, when you do that, and it seemed like we did a study on this, I can't remember when, obviously, the upfront cost would be enormous for buying whatever electronic device you're downloading. And obviously, you'd have to have some kind of maintenance program in place. Then you'd have to deal with the issue of people stealing somebody's, what do they call it, iPad or laptops or whatever. I mean, I love the idea and I love the concept, particularly when you get a call from a parent saying their kid has to carry 40 pounds of books home every day. And, you know, you sympathize with them.
A couple of years when we looked at it, one of the, logistically, is that device that it's loaded on is going to have to be turned in at the end of every year. And we'd have to get those and then load what the new textbook software is on all those devices. So, it can be done, but it's going to take some manpower to do that right now. If it's where it's, I'll post it on web and we can link to it. That would be the easiest thing.
To me, another very obvious, rather than dragging the books, it also could cut down on the time between classes because you just about cut out the need for the locker because the kid can carry everything with them, place to place. And the NOOK, for example, is out now at retail at $135 to my wife for a birthday present. I could, you know, we got that deal. So, you're going to be under $100 at school prices to buy something that will work. You don't need a full-blown iPad to make it work, just the reading device itself. So, I just think it's something we need to keep an ear to the ground on because I believe, my concern that you mentioned is what do you do when the kid loses it or tears it up or gets stolen? I think that's the, that's going to be the issue. And someone suggested to me that if that happens, that you do have hardbacked books available. And, you know, once that happens, you've got one shot at dealing, okay? That's the only, you got to go the hardback route. But I just think it's something we need to keep a handle on.
You bring a good point up though, too, that if they had gone beyond the NOOK, if you put a little bit more with it, then you have access to the internet. So, you have a world of resources that they could use for researching. And then also, if they had word processing, Excel, other capabilities, PowerPoint, then they have everything right there at their desktop to do multiple activities.
If we could reach out to our own business partners here in the county as well, I know there was an article within the last seven days about a subsidiary of Ingram is looking into this, and they've got a separate division of their company now that's going to be doing textbook publishing in a digital format. And with the magnet school that we've got now being a, you know, a kind of a separate entity, and we could offer that to them and say, "Look, there's your prototype right there. Right here in your own county, good PR. We're ready when you are." Right here in your own county, good P R, we're ready when you are.
I also think at twenty-fourteen, when all the assessments are gonna be online in some form or fashion, we're gonna have to have some sort of device for every student to be able to take those assessments. So it's time to kind of plant that seed now and be thinking about how we're gonna do that.
T camp will be given online in twenty-fourteen?
Yes.
Missed that memo. Well, that's a pretty big deal, isn't it?
That is a big deal.
While we meet on that, listen out, you and me and just a few others. Get some dialogue started on that again.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Uh, number twelve.
Facility at Oakland Middle School final change order. R G Anderson Construction has submitted the final change order for Oakland Middle in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars. This change order includes a final billing for items funded in the building program budget by Rutherford County School Board and the County Commission in earlier action. And we're recommending that you approve the final change order to R G Anderson Construction on Oakland Middle School. The amount of fifty-five thousand dollar funds are available in the building program budget due to earlier action by the school board and the county commission.
Questions on that one?
Whitworth Buchanan Middle School final change order. Robert Biskin Construction has submitted the final change order for Whitworth Buchanan Middle School in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars. This change order includes a final billing for items funded in the building program budget by the Rutherford County School Board and County Commission in earlier action. Recommend that you approve the final change order to Biskin Construction on Whitworth Canyon in the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars. Funds are available in the building program budget due to earlier action by the Rough County School Board and the County Commission.
Questions? C.
Smyrna Property Dedications. Mr. Robert Mullins has requested dedication of a one acre tract of property from the Rutherford County Board of Education to the town of Smyrna on the town's behalf. Property is at the corner of Weekly Street and Enan Springs Road west of the Smyrna, uh, the site of the Smyrna Fire Hall one. Fire Hall one property was dedicated from the board to the town of Smyrna and recorded on May seventeenth, nineteen ninety-two. And the one acre tract that is requested is a balance of that tract of land that was not needed at that time. The property will be used to relocate a building from the property of the Smyrna Church of Christ to make room for an expansion. The historic building that is to be relocated was used for a subscription school from the eighteen seventies to nineteen oh nine. It was also the first school in the town of Smyrna. Uh, obviously, the, one of the perks of doing it would be kids could access that old school and it could be used as a, I don't know, learning tool for kids. Uh, and I'd also say, if you look at the, uh, as an aerial view of the land, I mean, I don't, Mr. Clardy, Mr. Clardy's been down there. I asked him, Robert Mullins down there. I don't think it would, I can't see of any use it could ever be to the school board. I don't know how we got the land anyway. And I, we're gonna recommend that we, uh, dedicate that one acre tract of property to the Rough County Board of Education to the town of Smyrna at four oh one Enan Springs Road West to relocate a historic school building. It was used from the eighteen seventies to nineteen oh nine.
Wayne.
It's also right across the school from the library and the park.
That's true. That's a good point.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a map on, in your tab, under your tab.
The ongoing maintenance and of that property and ownership of that property, would it be town of Smyrna?
It would be. You talked, who'd you talk to, Gary?
I talked to, uh, Mr. Odenhill's secretary. And basically, they're cutting it now. They're keeping it cleaned up and because. Fire Hall. And they also have access to the fire hall through that piece of property now, even though it's not, uh, they don't have an easement through it, but they're using it to get on to, uh, Enan Springs Road. I really can't see of any use that it is to us. If you look in there, it's kind of a very thin strip that runs around the lot. So, uh, we just thought that it would be very beneficial for them to get that old schoolhouse up there since we're not using it and we don't really have any purpose for it.
Question, other questions on that? I don't. Donald.
No. I think it's a good idea as long as it's being used for the historical preservation of the area. But, you know, I kind of like the idea that we give it to them for that. That it might be written with that in mind. If it's used for anything else, then the county would be.
Revert back to us. I agree.
It's a good idea.
No problem with that, is there, Mr. Jeff?
No, we could have a very plausible reason we could do that.
We need to vote on that on Thursday or can we just operate on understanding?
That would be part of the motion, yes.
Well, just remember to, somebody remind me or make a motion, even better, on Thursday and we'll do that. That's a good idea, Donald. Other discussion? Thirteen.
Building program amendments, uh, the first amendment moves the remaining funding for three projects back to either the elementary or secondary funding for future projects. Elementary funds have been shared with Murphy's Borough City Schools. Secondary funds are not shared. Uh, one thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars from Rockville Middle School Project. Nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars from the Brown's Chapel Elementary School Project. Hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars from two thousand and seven repairs are being moved. The unshared a hundred, the unshared eight hundred and sixty-one dollars will go to the design fee. Stewart's Creek High School and the shared one million sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars will be available for the next elementary school. Design fees for Stewart's Creek High School will be funded internally within the building program until the county goes to bond market. And we're recommending that you amend it, uh, one thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars from Rockville Middle School Project. Nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars from Brown's Chapel Elementary School Project. Hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars from the two thousand and seven repairs for a total of one million sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars with eight hundred and sixty-one being moved to Stewart's Creek High School. Design fees and a million sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars being moved for the next elementary school.
Questions about this? Donald.
The repairs. Explain that to me.
Jeffrey.
Hundred thirty-two thousand, hundred thirty-three thousand.
Those are funds that we had moved from various other repair projects and general purpose fund balance. And we were able to finish those projects without going into those. They've been sitting out there since we finished those projects probably two years ago.
So the repair is a generic, it's not specific?
Yes. We accomplished all the projects we had in that budget for repairs. And that was what was left.
Other questions? Okay, B.
Second Amendment cleans up budgeted funds in four projects that are underway. No new funds are being added to these projects. The amendment just moves already budgeted funds to different line items within each project. First, Homer Peter Campus School renovation, nine thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars. And incidentally, if you hadn't been told, they appreciate their new windows. They're telling us pretty regularly and we appreciate them appreciating. Two, Oakland Middle School, two hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Whitworth Buchanan, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Central Magnet School, five hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Recommend that we amend the individual line items in the Homer Peter Campus School renovation project, Oakland Middle School project, Whitworth Middle, uh, Buchanan Middle School project and Central Middle School project as presented.
Questions?
Do we have any more projects at those schools or any?
At Homer Peter?
Yeah.
Uh, we've got that phase two, that we're, phase four that we're completing. What's, you want to give the status of that or is that part of Thursday night?
Uh, I don't, let me bring it up Thursday night. I was gonna give you a full rundown.
Okay.
So these are shifting within the same project though, right?
Yes. Yes.
Other questions? Uh, fourteen.
Department of the Disciplinary Hearing Authority pursuant to board policy and federal law, board must appoint members to serve on the D H A each year. The disciplinary hearing authorities are pumped conducting appeal hearings for students who have been suspended for more than ten days. And we're recommending that you approve one member from the following position to be included on the disciplinary hearing authority. An administrator from the appropriate grade level, a school psychologist, a school social worker, student service representative, or instructional coordinator. Chairman of the committee shall be the attendance supervisor or the attendance teacher.
Discussion. Uh, fifteen, we have some more policy manual to review this month. So there won't be any action needed Thursday, but please try to take a look at these and see if you think we need to refer anything to the policy committee. Sixteen.
Uh, insurance update. Open enrollment for health care and voluntary benefits is in progress. Uh, employees were notified in September with payroll stuffers and a card mailed to each home addressed with informational meeting dates. A packet of information including the enrollment guide was distributed at each school department site for all employees. Employees must log into the employee's system to review current benefits, submit their choices, and print a copy for their rounds.
There's still a fair number of them who hadn't done it when you sent out the, I guess it was an email we saw that.
We sent so many.
Only a mom would send out so many reminders.
That's what I was gonna mention, how it was going. I think there's a few people that are just waiting back to see if there's something better. Comes alive, you know? They gotta go up and sign up for the very out of game almost.
Any questions on the insurance?
No, but I want to say one thing. We get asked, I get asked, not weekly, but certainly monthly, is there a move to go with the state plan? And the answer is no. We've done some comparisons. I don't know. I think there are benefits to our plan versus the state and there's benefits with the state versus ours. But there's been no, uh, no move in that direction.
General discussion. Let me report that I did talk to Ms. Wade, the chair of the city school board, and she seemed quite interested in having, uh, a meeting or a series of meetings, but she wanted to wait until the next board meeting to check the interest of her, her own board. But she seemed pretty optimistic about that, so I'll keep you apprised. I don't know exactly when their next meeting is, but she seemed interested in doing that. Harry, do you want to brief us on where we are on Stewart's Creek High School?
Uh, yeah, obviously the county commission approved seventeen to three, uh, money to design and proceed with Stewart's Creek High School. They have not yet voted on funding it. They've asked us to come back with a, was it three-year or five-year building plan? Of course, I explained to them that could change with respect to how many kids we pick up in any given year and we intend to go back. I think we, have we scheduled our special call meeting, Ms. Michaels?
I think it, yes.
First week or somewhere around that.
Will be November the ninth.
November the ninth that we'll need to meet and go over the, over the building program. Uh, so we'll, we'll delay any kind of pursuing of the construction by at least one month and we'll go back to them in a couple of months. Uh, I was very proud that they stepped up and approved that funding so, you know, that we'd have a shot at pulling this off.
So with that, when would they need to decide they're actually gonna pay for the entire project? What, you know, we talked about this timeline.
They'd go to bond. When would they go to bond? In the spring?
Probably in the summer.
Okay. We would need to start construction probably May. Because it is a good two-year project and that's just some wiggle room in case we have issues with construction. So I think they need to probably January or February, probably make a decision.
Does, uh, can we, can we share some pretty significant optimism that the funding for the, the plans will, will be a good sign that they'll fund the project?
I don't know.
Okay, that's okay. That answered the question.
I will say this, Mr. Tackett, and we've done over the span of the last two or three weeks some serious studying and reflection on the numbers. And it is pretty frightening how many kids we could have stuck outdoors in portables by the year two thousand thirteen. And I think many of them got that message. Uh, you know, if you, if you count Riverdale and you count what Blackman has, you count what Laverne, you count what Smyrna is, uh, what their current sixth and ninth grade enrollment is. Plus you tack on three percent growth each and every year. I don't think there's any question you'll have as many as fifteen hundred kids outside portables. And I don't know, and that's not, as I told them, it's not inflated. It's factual. It's going to result in two, uh, close to three million dollars worth of portable purchases. And on a grander scale, it would be a nightmare to manage that if you're a high school principal. Can you imagine having five hundred or six hundred kids stuck outside in portables? So I think many of them, you know, they stepped up before and, uh, you know, if we can in fact fund the opening costs with our fund balance where it doesn't result in a tax increase, I think there's a good, good opportunity to get the school.
Okay, appreciate your efforts. Aaron, you have?
Last Friday night, uh, went to the Smyrna Laverne football game. Wasn't good for Laverne. Uh, I think that final score was fifty to nothing.
It's been that way a lot, unfortunately.
That was, that was a tough one. But, uh, the mounted patrol was there, uh, from the sheriff's department and they were impressive. And it was a really nice addition. Uh, I know, I have thought as a taxpayer sometimes, wow, do we really need a mounted patrol in Rutherford County? Uh, the guys have expressed to me how much is donated to that program and everything, but they were really nice. Uh, it was, it was nice to have them there at the stadium and everything was really, really nice. On the subject of Laverne, at the football game there, flyers were passed out as to our board meeting on Thursday. Uh, encouraging folks to come and express themselves. Visitor policy and things like that. We're three minutes, am I correct? Is there interaction between the board and a visitor speaker?
Typically, we try not to do a whole lot of that, although sometimes we'll respond if they ask a question or make a particularly outrageous remark. But if there's a lot of them, we don't especially tend to do much back and forth. It just depends, you know, if there are a lot of people, they're each entitled to speak for three minutes. That's pretty simple. I mean, that's our policy. Now, if they start repeating, and if everybody wants to speak and fills out the form can speak. Now, we hope that they don't repeat each other endlessly and we don't really allow personal attacks. I mean, they can certainly talk about policies that are being instituted, those sorts of things. But in terms of attacking somebody's motives or something like that, we don't really allow that.
The grievances that have been filed and most decided and all, those don't have anything to do with the board. Those are all within employment contracts. Is that right? So those aren't board policy grievances. Is that correct?
There's policy that governs, Angel step up. There's policy that governs, uh, complaint procedure. You know, the board developed that policy. And anybody is entitled to file, file a complaint. No, Angel.
Well, and there are two separate processes. One, I think you're referring to is the grievance process, which, which teachers are entitled to file under the union contract. That's a separate process. And then the, the system has a complaint procedure as well, which entitles any parent or employee to file a complaint against another employee or, um, person in the system. So we, we've had both of those in this case.
We have had both?
Yes.
Okay. When do those come before the board?
I think, yeah, I think that's what he's getting at, is what role, if any, does the board have in either of those?
Neither of those will come to the board. The grievance process is a three-step process that may then go to arbitration under a provision in the contract. The complaint procedure also is a three-step process. Uh, if you're talking about teachers or personnel, it's a two-step process. If you're talking about administrators. Um, one is to designate the superintendent who will. If you're talking about administrators, um, one is to the designee of the superintendent who will investigate, and the second level, uh, appeal is to the superintendent or director of schools. So, but, but they do not come before the board. Basically, because the board does not have the authority to discipline teachers. You know, if there is an issue with an administrator or a teacher, and there needs to be disciplinary action taken, then the director of schools is the only person who has the authority to do that.
Okay, but the investigation and all of those things, no, no report is given back to the board?
No, sir.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yeah, Grant. I think, uh, when we have a, a big audience, a lot of times, there'll be people that's representing several folks. Usually, we give them a little bit of leeway on that if they can, you know, that can shorten some of the repetition. It would be, uh, sometimes that happens, and, uh, if that comes about, maybe we can, maybe I can get a little bit more orderly if we look at that.
We'll just have to see, yeah, well, thank you for that.
If we're not...
Yeah, well, we'll just have to see. It's hard to predict how these things are actually gonna go. A lot of times, what we think is gonna happen doesn't actually happen on these board nights, but, yeah. We want people to have their say, but we also wanna have an orderly, and we'll have an orderly meeting. Donald?
What you were talking about, yeah, a moment ago, Ms. Tyler, is a result of state law and not board policy. We did not make policy that moved us from that. State law did that in nineteen ninety-four, is that correct?
In terms of giving the director the authority to hire, and, yes, sir, that's correct.
I think that's another thing the public is often confused about. They'll call us up and say, "Why in the world do you, don't you fire so-and-so?" Well, other than Mr. Gill, you can't hire and fire anybody. We don't get involved in that, and I think that people are, tend to be a little confused about that. Are the questions on that, or discussion on any other topic?
You know, I just feel like I need to say something. First of all, Mr. Ash's background, he was obviously the principal of our middle school, which is probably the toughest middle school job in the county. He went in there and, and over the span of five or six years, every how long he was there, had fierce loyalty from his faculty. You know, he won them over, he showed them in his way would work, which is pretty regimented, high expectations. Well enough, in fact, I, he was recognized at the state level in that category as principal of the year, and then he also received a check for having the highest, second highest value-added scores in Tennessee. All that played into why he got this job. And it saddens me, if, if you've been on the facilities or been in the building, you see the remarkable change outside and inside. I think we'd all acknowledge that. Also, I've heard from many, uh, that appreciate the fact that kids are better groomed, they're in the class learning. We had a girl in here, a student that came in a while ago. He was moved to tears, talking about how wonderful he's been and how hard he's worked him and challenged him. And then, on the other hand, you've got somebody, or someone, or some folks that are out passing flyers to come down here about principal. I would say that some of the best principals we have in, in, in our high schools have their, or in our schools, period, have their schools running in such a manner where Mr. Ash wants to get Laverne High School. And people in that school have learned that those are appropriate expectations, that they're there to learn, that the teachers are there to teach, and that the kids, uh, are going to behave. And I think that is what he aspires to do. And, you know, the guy needs a chance, he needs the support, I've heard that from many. I've had more positive calls than negative calls. Matter of fact, I can't think of but one person that's called me. Most of the stuff's going on behind the scenes, people passing out flyers, blogging on the, on the newspaper, uh, won't, won't give their name. I mean, none of us on this board, or, or myself, or Ms. McLeod, want a, somebody that'll bully kids or trample on teachers' rights. I mean, I'm not even tolerating. I think we're on our way to doing good things down there personally. I know we're gonna hear from some people Thursday night, apparently, that are, that are going to disagree with what I've just said. But I understand there may be some that speak on the other side of the issue as well, so... You know, it's a tough job that he has. It's gonna be tough turning it around. And, uh, Wayne, I know you were on the board last year. We got a lot of calls last year, and a lot of people that want out of that school as well. When I get calls from real estate agents that said, "For the first time in years, we're getting people that are willing to move in there," or I get a call from Harold Wilcox, unsolicited, who is, uh, heads up Josh's Rain Division, that, uh, "Hey, I just left Laverne High School. I cannot tell you how well behaved those kids were. I'd already prepared my salesman that this year, that this is gonna be a nightmare for us. Now, get ready, hunker down, they're gonna be misbehaved and all that." And he said, "They were the best behaved high schools in the county that I've been to." And when you hear that, you feel like you've got an objective opinion, uh, from somebody, and, uh, I would encourage, if there are those out there that are trying to undermine or pull the wool or, or pull the rug out from under them, that they, that they get on board and, uh, you know, let's, let's support as best possible.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
I would be curious, I know we, we have a couple of letters here from students. I mean, we, we talk about it being all about students. I know, I know that there are complaints from, from, uh, adults. If, if, if the system in any way, shape, form, or fashion has received any complaint from any student, uh, I don't know how often that happens, even when times are really particularly bad. But I'm just curious if, if we've had any, any student make any approach to anybody here through any media, medium, is that the right word? That, that they're, that they're dissatisfied with what's going on at Laverne High School.
I have not received any complaints from students or parents.
Now, we were advised that there was a teacher down there that was encouraging kids to complain, which really makes your job tough, when you're having to deal with that, that, that aspect of...
But to this point, we haven't received any?
No.
Well, there's pluses and minuses to everything you do. I'm sure there's some minuses there, but you won't keep the pluses well ahead of the minuses. And, you know, he might not be the, the guy that you won't sit down and eat dinner with, but, uh, you know...
It's not why we hired him, is it?
Bottom line is, uh, you know, how are things running? Are the kids safe? Are the parents getting the information they need? Are teachers giving, do they have an environment that they can do their job? You know, what kind of person he is?
Well, I, I can, I can, I can just say from what I know personally of him, he is a person I've had dinner with, but that's not why I would support or reject anything that he's done. I, and I do know his heart's pure and his desire is to do well at the school. That's, I think that's what, I hope that's what we're aspiring to hire.
Other discussion? If not, we will see you Thursday night. What's that?